Good morning, everyone. It is 7:00 AM on this April 26, 2023. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to Hold to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item for discussion this morning is an update on lead service lines, and we'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor, in the Minnesota Department of Public Health. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, as the memo mentioned, there's new changes to lead and copper service lines. So we thought it would be good for somebody directly from the source, knowing the ins and outs of the rule change, come and just inform the council of these changes. And it's a good time for the staff to learn of these changes, too, or get more in-depth training on it. So we have Michael Borland. He's a compliance engineer from the water supply, Community Water Supply District of the Department of Health. He'll go through a presentation and just give you the ins and outs of the rule change. And like I said, the staff is here to learn along with you guys. We're a ways down the road already due to Chad and his staff already bringing us into compliance on some of the pieces. And the rest of the staff, they're going to be out in the field doing a lot of the legwork. So, Michael, you can just come forward and go through your presentation. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Michael. Thanks for being here.
Yeah. Excuse me. Thank you very much, everybody. I'm happy to be here. Yeah, I guess as far as my presentation today goes, I've got the topics listed on the slide here. But the plan is that, I guess, it's all right if I take this out.
Have to ask Lynn.
There we go. Yeah. I can stand up straight now. But, yeah, I wanted to just kind of go over the topics related to the service line inventory. It's one of the major projects that systems are required to do under the revised rule at this point. And so without getting too inside-baseball with all the different federal rule requirements, I wanted to cover the process of developing inventories, the requirements related to notifying customers about their service line materials, making sure that, you know, I'll cover the requirements related to systems needing to replace service lines as well, and then health effects language, and then also just kind of some essential information for when it comes to, you know, responding to questions from the general public. So starting off with the general inventory requirements. Systems are required to take inventory of all of the active service lines in the distribution. So if a service line is connected to the water main, that service line needs to be identified with a location identifier, and they also need to be able to identify the material for that service line. The service line identification needs to be broken down into four categories, where a service line is either lead, non-lead, galvanized, requiring replacement, that's what the GRR stands for, or unknown. And so unknown service lines, if a system doesn't have any record of what a service line material is, or if they can't conduct a site verification to confirm what the service line material is, that service line would be considered unknown. And in some respects of the rule, the unknown service line would need to be considered a lead service line until proven otherwise. And then as far as what systems are required to do when it comes to developing service line inventories, they are required to review any historical records, any construction records that could indicate service line material, construction date, anything that would help a system determine what a service line material would be. That is what's required to do in the Federal Register. But, you know, given varying degrees of historical records and accuracy, a lot of systems are considering doing site verification projects so that they can actually verify service line material inside the home, just to make sure that when they do log that service line, that they do have an accurate material identification. And so the inventories are required to be publicly available. And when it comes to making the inventory information publicly available, there needs to be a location identifier with every service line that's identified in the distribution. The Minnesota Department of Health has been working with the University of Minnesota. They currently have an infrastructure tracking tool that we have updated so that when systems submit their inventories to the Department of Health, we will be able to share that information with the University of Minnesota. And then the inventory information would be updated to the online infrastructure tracking tool. And it would act as a central location for the Minnesota inventories, where someone could go to the infrastructure tracking tool, they could type in an address or a location identifier, and it would just be able to share that information on what that service line material is. And so the requirement for the inventories is that they do need to be submitted to the Department of Health by October 2024. The specific date is actually October 16th, but it's not too far away at this point. It seems like just yesterday the EPA had announced these revisions, and so systems are working to meet that deadline. And as the state agency, the Department of Health, is holding Minnesota systems to that deadline for the inventory submission. So once an inventory is considered completed, as in it's been submitted, it's been made publicly available, the system is also required to provide notices to their customers, to the residents in the distribution. And that involves notifying them that the inventory is publicly accessible. And so technically, systems are required to share the locations of all of the lead and galvanized, requiring replacement service lines in the distribution. And so kind of the point of the University of Minnesota infrastructure tracking tool is that we would kind of take that responsibility off of a systems plate so that we would handle making that information publicly available. And then assuming that it is all online, we would be able to provide a template to systems where they would just be able to send that in the mail to residents, just letting them know, you know, this is where that information is saved, this is the URL, this is the website that you can go to to find that inventory information. And then for systems, if a system find that they don't have any lead service lines in their distribution, or they don't have any service lines that are required to be replaced, they would be able to issue a statement saying that, you know, the system has a non-lead service line inventory, and just describing how they were able to confirm that there were no lead service lines in the distribution. And so the end game is that as a system submits their initial inventory, and then as time goes on, as systems work to replace all of the service lines that are required to be replaced, eventually they would be able to create that statement and just be able to share with residents that there are no lead service lines in the distribution. And then outside of the public accessibility notice, there is a separate notice that needs to go to customers with either lead, galvanized, requiring replacement, or unknown service lines. If there are customers that are served by those service lines, there are different health effects language for each type that needs to be sent out directly to those residents in the mail. And so when it comes to these public accessibility notifications and the service line material notifications, both of these are required to be done annually. At this point, the Department of Health is planning on, you know, following the initial inventory submission, following the initial inventory submission, the public accessibility notice would be something that could be included in a system's annual drinking water report. So rather than it being a separate notice, it would be something that could just be included as part of the annual drinking water report that systems are already required to issue on an annual basis. The service line notices, those would be something that would still need their own separate notice, and that would be something that a system would need to do annually. And there would just need to be a certification that they had sent out those notices on an annual basis. And then when it comes to, you know, the collaboration between customers and systems in terms of replacing lead service lines, you know, the customers can buy systems if they are planning on replacing a lead service line, but because of the money that was funded through the, there's a couple abbreviations for it, there's the bipartisan infrastructure law, and then the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, I believe. But the money for lead service line replacements was coming from, the federal money was coming through that bill that was passed. And so that is being funneled through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. And so that money is available now. Systems that have lead service lines that want to replace them can submit applications for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund and get put on the, I believe there's a project priority list for those systems. But they would be able to apply for that funding to get started on replacing lead service lines now while the money is available. So I guess when it comes to replacing service lines in the distribution, you know, as I had said, systems don't need to wait until they have to replace lead service lines to start these projects. But under the revised rule, there are certain requirements where systems would have to meet a certain replacement rate for removing a certain number or a certain percentage of lead service lines every year. And so that will be determined, at least based on the way the current revised rule or current rule revisions are written. Systems would be required to replace a certain percentage of lead service lines if they exceeded either the lead trigger level or the lead action level. And the lead action level is something that is already in place that systems are required to maintain. The lead trigger level is a new, essentially a new level that systems would also need to meet when collecting lead and copper samples. And so when it comes to systems being required to replace lead service lines, the revised rule requires that only full lead service line replacements would count towards the required percentage that a system would have to meet. And that essentially means, you know, the system would just be required to replace the entire lead portion of the service line in order for it to count towards the required replacement rate. So say if, if a service line has a portion of copper coming off of the water main, but then at one point it connects to a lead service line, and then the lead service line is what connects to the meter inside the home, they wouldn't be required to replace the copper portion of that service line. They would only have to replace the lead portion of the service line, but they wouldn't need to replace it entirely in order for it to count towards the required replacement rate. And then, you know, when it comes to systems having a lead exceedance in addition to being required to replace lead service lines, they would also be required to conduct lead and copper sampling more frequently. And so as systems collect lead and copper samples, if they're maintaining that lead action level and lead trigger level, and they're meeting the required replacement rate, after a certain amount of time, the required replacement rate would lift, and the system would no longer be required to just continue replacing lead service lines indefinitely. And the monitoring frequency would also reduce to be less frequent. And so there are requirements in place to replace lead service lines, but they wouldn't be indefinite. And so I guess on top of that, if a system were to have a lead trigger level exceedance or lead action level exceedance, regardless, if that system has corrosion control treatment in place for the drinking water, that system would be required to conduct a study to evaluate their current corrosion control treatment and possibly more optimal corrosion control treatment options. And I say that because we're, at the very least, anticipating that the way the revised rule is written right now, that systems exceeding the lead trigger level or the lead action level could become a lot more common under the revised rule. And so right now, you know, since I've been with the Department of Health, I believe, over the past couple of years, there has just been, you know, one system that has a lead exceedance per year. But part of the revised rule change is that it requires systems to collect fifth liter samples from homes with lead service lines. And so the idea there is that the fifth liter sample is going to be more representative of the water that's been sitting in the lead service line. And I can say that there are some systems that have done investigative sampling to collect these fifth liter samples at homes where they know have lead service lines, and those results are commonly, you know, twice the current lead action level. So the current lead action level is 15 parts per billion, and that's going to hold up in the revised rule. But some of these investigative samples are coming back around 30 parts per billion pretty commonly. And so where the first liter samples typically, you know, haven't seen as high of lead results from those samples, if the fifth liter sampling protocol is going to be the required protocol moving forward, a lot of systems that maybe haven't had a lead exceedance on record ever, or if they haven't had one in decades, could expect to see a lead exceedance under the revised rule if they do have a significant number of lead service lines in the distribution. And so all of that said, I will just qualify that by saying that the EPA still has yet to announce their lead and copper rule improvements. The easiest way to describe that is that it is going to be the revisions for the revisions, and the improvements could entail sweeping changes that could affect the sampling protocol. It could affect the way systems are required to do corrosion control studies or evaluate their corrosion control treatment. Or it could entail minimal changes, and the revised rule could, you know, just kind of continue as it's currently written in the Federal Register. The EPA has announced that they are expecting to share the proposed lead and copper rule improvements with the states later this year. The last anticipated date that I heard was in September of this year. And I guess at this point, I will just say that, you know, MDH is going to work to make sure that as soon as those improvements are announced, as soon as we can share information with systems, that we're going to be doing that as soon as we can, and making sure that we just continue to prepare for the next stage of the new lead and copper rule. So getting to the health effects of lead in drinking water, you know, the EPA's motto is there is no safe level of lead in drinking water. Granted, you know, the action level that systems are held to for lead in drinking water is 15 parts per billion. The new rule is going to require 10 parts per billion. That lead trigger level is going to be set at 10 parts per billion. And the trigger level is set to essentially require systems to take preemptive action to evaluate their corrosion control treatment, and to begin replacing lead service lines in order to at least give the system a shot to reduce the lead levels throughout the system so that they could avoid exceeding the 15-part-per-billion action level in the future. When it comes to, you know, the health effects of lead in drinking water, they have updated the required language that systems need to notify the public with. Currently, the health effects language mainly focuses on the fact that lead can affect developing brains more than anything else. And the new language does acknowledge that, but there's a lot of text on the slide. But if you look at the first paragraph listed, towards the end, it talks about adults having increased risks of heart disease, high blood pressure, and kidney or nervous system problems if they are exposed to elevated levels of lead for an extended period of time. And so there is also information about lead service lines. As I had talked about, customers needing to be notified about having lead service lines, those customers will need to be given language about, you know, how to access the service line inventory, how they can reach out to the system about getting their service line replaced, and just making sure that they have knowledge to be able to mitigate their exposure to lead while they still have a lead service line. And so there is current lead in drinking water information on the MDH website. That information is still relevant and worth sharing with people. A lot of the language that is currently listed on our lead and drinking water website, on our informational sheet that we share with systems, is still relevant and worth sharing to the public. But then outside of that, you know, the MDH website itself also gets into more detail on just how people can reduce their exposure to lead overall. And so when it comes to responding to questions from the general public about, you know, what's going on, why is this happening, I did just kind of get some basic questions together that I figured would be helpful to be able to answer. So if somebody asks, how do I get my water tested? If they're just concerned about having any level of lead in their drinking water, MDH, we do have information available on people being able to reach out to accredited water testing labs in Minnesota. The website itself can be a little difficult to navigate, and so whenever I get this question, I'll tell people to go to Google and type into Google either MDH Accredited Labs, or the title of the website is Environmental Laboratory Accreditation Program, and MDH. And it's usually the first link that comes up. It'll bring you to a page that just has a box, and there'll be a little search button. And when you hit that search button, it just gives you the full list of all of the accredited labs in Minnesota that can test for, you know, different contaminants in water. And a lot of the labs in Minnesota do lead sampling. And so when it comes to, you know, just making sure that people are getting accurate results of their lead in drinking water, I've gotten calls from the public about, you know, they bought a water testing kit off of Amazon, and they got this really high lead result. And that's not to say that that result can't be accurate, but we, or at least in talking to them about how to move forward, I always recommend that, you know, they consider contacting an accredited lab because they are using the methods that are approved by the EPA. They use methods that a lot of the water systems are required to use when conducting lead and copper sampling. And, you know, it doesn't cost nothing, but at the very least, going to the accredited lab will ensure that they're getting an accurate result of the lead content in their drinking water. So how can I replace my service line? If a customer gets notified about having a lead service line, and the red flags go off, and they just want to get it replaced immediately? I guess in talking with Chad, it sounds like in Fergus Falls, customers own the entire service line going up to the water main. And so with that in mind, they don't necessarily have to wait if they just want to replace whatever portion of lead service line is there. And so...
Michael, can we jump in real quick?
Yeah.
Just to clarify what the public's...
Yeah, the customer actually owns just to the stop box.
Oh, to the curb stop?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's all right. And so in that case, if a customer owns the service line up to the, up to the curb stop or the stop box, if they want to replace that portion of lead service line, if, you know, they have the funds to do so, they don't necessarily have to wait in order to do that. When it comes to following the lead, or after the lead service line replacement, I would say you would just want to make sure that they consider getting some sort of water filter, a pitcher filter, and at least use that filter for up to three to six months following the replacement, just because following any sort of service line plumbing work, that sort of stuff, those disturbances can cause scale release, metal release, where over those next few months, they could expect to see, you know, elevated levels of corrosion, of pipe scale in their drinking water, that they would just want to make sure that they have a filter of some sort to be able to remove that. And, you know, eventually, after that time has passed, you know, the new plumbing will be a little more consistent with the existing plumbing that was in place, and they wouldn't necessarily need to keep that filter going, you know, indefinitely. And then the other important point to bring up is that when a customer gets their lead service line replaced, it's good to set expectations that just because the lead service line is replaced, doesn't mean that, you know, they will never see any level of lead in their drinking water. Depending on when the home was constructed, even if they have copper pipe inside the home, some of that copper pipe could be held together with lead solder that could still, you know, release trace levels of lead into the drinking water, depending on what kind of plumbing materials they have in their home, depending on what kind of fixtures they have. Some fixtures, brass fixtures, can also leach lead into drinking water. And so the lead service line is kind of the main source of lead that a water system has jurisdiction over. And so that's where the EPA wants systems to focus on getting those removed. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, once that is removed, that there will be zero lead found in the drinking water. And then as far as cities going about replacing service lines, obviously, when it comes to the service line replacements, you know, if people can avoid spending money on getting those service lines replaced, I would absolutely understand that motivation. And so cities right now can apply for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund money for lead service line replacement projects. At this point, the way I understand it, I haven't been directly involved in these processes, but there is some legislative items in the mix that the current session is still working on finalizing that will determine how the funding needs to be distributed. Because the way I understand it, there's issues with using federal dollars towards private property renovations, i.e. the private service line replacements. But I know the legislative items are in the mix, just to make sure that can be smoothed out so that by the time cities are applying for lead service line replacement projects, if there are private portions of service lines that need to be replaced, that ultimately the financing would be no cost to the homeowner nor the water system itself. And so finally, you know, if someone is just asking, how did this happen? Why, why do I have to do anything about my current plumbing? You know, lead was a much more common plumbing material a long time ago, where it was just a very ductile material. It seemed very useful at the time, and that it would hold up over a long time. But, you know, time has passed, and the health effects have been found out. And, you know, more than anything else, all of these rule revisions, all of these new requirements are all being done for the sake of protecting, protecting public health. And so the new regulations focusing on lead service line replacements, that is all kind of meant for, you know, as I had said, it's kind of the last portion of plumbing that the system has jurisdiction over before you get into, you know, the plumbing inside the home. And we're definitely not expecting systems to get inside people's homes to replace premise plumbing. But at the very least, the lead service lines can be replaced. A significant portion of those sources of lead in drinking water can be gotten rid of. And in the long run, it'll just continue to improve the water quality throughout Minnesota, but also throughout the country. So I guess at this point, that was all of the material I had put together. I'd be happy to take questions and answer them as best I can. I'd be happy to take questions and answer them as best I can, as best I can.
Thank you, Michael. It's a lot of information, but it's obviously very useful information. Council?
I got a few questions.
Yeah, please, Anthony.
Are you proposing then that galvanized, or galvanized piping should be removed? I mean, because obviously, it's galvanized requiring replacement? Or is it just deteriorated galvanized piping?
So, the galvanized requiring replacement is an interesting category because a galvanized service line that is required to be replaced essentially means that if a galvanized service line was downstream of a lead, of a lead pipe at any point in time, the, the way the galvanized material works is that as that lead pipe releases corrosion into the drinking water, a galvanized service line could actually latch on to the corrosion from the lead pipe and just hold on to it. And so, even if the lead portion of the pipe that was upstream of the service line had been removed, that galvanized line could still hang on to the lead release and continue leaching that into the drinking water. And so, I guess, the way MDH has kind of discussed it with systems at this point is that the requirements to prove that a lead service, or that a galvanized line was never downstream of a lead pipe is fairly difficult. And on top of that, in talking with systems, it seems like a lot of systems that do have galvanized service lines are connected to the main with lead connectors, lead goos next. And so, the EPA, for one reason or another, don't consider lead goos next to be lead pipes that would require galvanized replacements, but they are lead pipes. And so, at this point, when we have spoken with systems about the galvanized service lines, essentially, we have been saying that, you know, if they do have lead goos next, or if they can't prove that a galvanized line was never downstream of a lead pipe, you know, they could consider it to be galvanized requiring replacement and recruit, they could include it as part of a project to replace lead service lines or galvanized service lines.
I suppose, do we, do we have any inventory as a city of what lead we have?
We're a long ways down the road doing that. So, I think we've got forty-five hundred or so services. And of that, I think we're down to about four hundred that we don't know what they are. So, that's the piece that we've got to continue working on, and that's what the staff is going to do now through this summer, and then, so that we're in compliance by 2024.
Do we know what percentage of, like, piping in the city is lead?
Of the mains?
Yeah.
I don't think we have any lead in mains.
Yeah.
But of the service, of those forty-one, service, service lines?
Of the forty-five, of the, yeah, of the forty-one hundred that we know, what percentage of those contain lead?
We have a four hundred right now that are suspect that need to have physical inspection.
So, ten percent?
Thanks. And Chad and Travis, Daryl, Marsha, anyone have, you guys, this is some information for you two. Any questions from staff for Michael right now? Scott?
Is there still language that if a resident is notified that they have a verified lead line, is there a time requirement for the city to replace their portion?
Yes, there is. And so, in the federal rule right now, there is a requirement where if a customer replaces their privately owned portion of a lead service line, and there is still a lead portion of that service line that the system owns, the customer has forty-five days to notify the system about the private lead service line replacement. And then, the system in turn has a hundred eighty days, I believe, following that notice to replace the lead portion of the service line that they own.
Thanks. Scott?
If I'm a homeowner and I am notified, or I'm told that I need to be tested, that I'm one of these four hundred that's unknown, let's say, what's the process for that? You got to dig up my yard, or how do you even determine that?
So, when it comes to, I guess, identifying service line materials, at this rate, MDH isn't expecting systems to dig up somebody's yard to verify the service line material from start to finish. You know, the federal rule requires that systems review records. And kind of as best practice, you know, when it comes to just making sure that those records are accurate, we are recommending that systems consider, you know, at least attempting to make site verifications. A, to confirm that those historical records are accurate. They can at least verify the service line material as it enters the home. And if it matches up with what's on the historical record, that just increases the confidence in that record and using that for developing the service line inventory. But then, for areas of the distribution where maybe there aren't any records, at the very least, if a system can confirm the service line material as it enters the home, that would be justification to note that material for their inventory. And I will say that, you know, the initial inventory deadline is October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. But that doesn't mean that after October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, systems are done with inventories. These are going to be working documents that systems will be able to update as they replace lead service lines, as they conduct lead and copper sampling. And so, something that I've been telling systems is that on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the service line, the inventory, it doesn't have to be perfect, but we want it to be accurate. And so, if a system has records, if they've been able to verify those records, that's great. If there are areas of the distribution where they don't have any records, if they've made attempts to try and verify what the service lines are on site, but if, for whatever reason, they just weren't able to get access to the home, you know, it isn't... There, you, you can identify service lines as unknown. But then, moving forward, you know, there would just need to be a plan in place to eventually identify those service line materials and then incorporate any necessary replacements into the system's long-term plan so that eventually, the system has a non-lead service line inventory.
Thanks, Michael. So, again, a lot of information, and very important information is, is look at Flint, Michigan, obviously, is the, is the national example. So, it sounds like our staff is well down the road to making, ensuring that we've done all the inspections that are necessary. So, appreciate that, but also maybe ask that as we continue that, that, those inspections, that the staff comes back to the council and just gives us an update of where we're at as throughout the entire system, what replacements are, are necessary and scheduled, just so the public and the council has as much information as possible. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, it's reasonable.
Any other questions for Michael? Thank you, Michael, for being here this morning.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just say thank you to Chad. He had reached out to me about coming by to talk about, you know, the revised rule requirements, and I'm happy to do so. So, thank you very much for having me.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Chad, staff, Guy. All right, next up is a discussion, a recommendation from the Natural Resources Advisory Committee on No Mow May. And again, we'll call on Guy Taylor.
Thank you again, your honor. Last year, we saw some residents participating in what's becoming known, basically worldwide, started in the UK, No Mow May. So, there is a few residents that participated without an allowance through our code to do such a program. And what No Mow May is, you just don't mow your yard for the month of May to try to preserve, promote habitat for pollinators. So, the Natural Resources Advisory Committee, they took this up at the meeting in April and recommend to the council that they pass this variance, basically, to the ordinance to allow for a resident to opt into No Mow May for just the month of May, bringing the yard into compliance by June one. So, it's back to the no longer than six inches of grass length. So, that is the, the recommendation from the NRAC to allow that variance. Since that discussion, we've heard of differing opinions on how this actually promotes habitat for pollinators. So, the reality is, we're a few days away from May, but we're a long ways away from even mowing grass around here. So, I don't know that this is really going to be much of an effect for us this year. So, the recommendation is out there from the Natural Resource, Resource Advisory Committee, but we would like to do some more research and consider both sides of the argument and then move forward as far as implementing this by code potentially next year.
So, is there, so you're saying that staff is asking the council to, are you making a recommendation from staff as far as the, you're saying it's not going to be an issue this year?
I think that's the reality.
If so, it's the last week of May typically, even last year. And I think that, again, if there's other research out there, I know that some, some of my neighbors mow their lawn, they've already mowed their lawn, which others, others don't. But I think, but I think the, the argument is that in, in climates like Minnesota, as the pollinators, as the bees, it's the bees that we're talking about mostly. As they come out of hibernation, there's not a lot of flowers from the feed on. So, if there's, if there's some early stages of dandelions and such in the grass, that's what they feed on until the flowers start to bloom in late May. I think it's a small price to pay, even if it's uncertain, that we could help pollinators, and it's not every grass, it's not every lawn, certainly. But anyway, it's up to the, the council, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see how it would be any harm. I mean, if grass is kind of long for a month and some yards, and it has the possible benefit of helping pollinators, you know, without pollinators, there's no food, so.
And that's, that's what the one side is saying, that it does help the pollinators. The other side is saying by allowing that grass to grow and then just whacking it off at a certain date, that actually does more harm.
One of the great debates of our time.
Well, I, I would just get in on that argument and say that I, for the, 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 the science that I understand is that by the time you cut that and whack that off at the last week of May or the first week in June in, in climates like Minnesota, the, the flowers have started to bloom, and there are other areas for the, the pollinators to feed. So, again, I'm not a scientist, but I, I do think if, if it is uncertain, allowing a few lawns, and certainly in my neighborhood, it's, it's a, a couple lawns for a couple weeks to, to allow their grass to be a little longer than, than, than normal is, is certainly not something that is unreasonable.
I think maybe the first of June though is a, I mean, that means like, you know, maybe we extend that because, you know, if you take, obviously, if it is more than six inches, and you take off like six inches, you're going to have hay. You know, you'd be better off like mowing down. I mean, one of the recommendations in this kind of, the notes was, you don't cut it off by the roots kind of the next day. So, I think if we're going to adopt something, we should give a little bit more than one twenty-four hour period to get your lawn back in compliance.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. And the other thing is that, is too, like, the people that are participating in No Mow May are typically like taking care of their lawn, they're, they're aware of what's going on. And so, it's not like a certain day that they go out and like, oh, now I've got to mow it. They have a plan, you know, it's not, there's other people that are participating involuntarily in No Mow May and No Mow June and No Mow July. Those are the people I think we need to worry about. But anyway, I think that, I, I think it seemed reasonable that staff does a little bit more research. I don't think we're out enforcing any, anything in, in, in May of two thousand and twenty-three while you get the information you need, because I don't think this is a problem. I know that there are people that are reasonable, that are just trying to be conscientious of the, of the natural environment. Scott?
Just to make the comment that in the information we were given, the proposal is that this would be something that people would opt into. So, if it, if we do end up doing any type of ordinance, it's not just a blanket thing that everybody is automatically enrolled in. It's if you want to do it, you got to sign up.
Yes, correct.
All right. Any other comments from the, so if you bring something back to us, Guy, with the staff recommendation, we can take it up for next year, if it's an official policy. But I don't think we need to take any serious action this year. And I would say that, is it true that, I'm not going to mow my lawn until it absolutely needs it in the last week of May, and you're not going to come knocking on my door, right?
You never know.
All right. But I, but I, in all honesty, I don't think it's an issue that, that we need to, to probably, would, would you agree, like?
I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, just with the lateness of the spring arrival, I don't think it's an issue this year.
Appreciate that. And yeah, if you want, if you have some more information to bring back to the council to consider, a formal policy, we'll consider it that time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Guy. Next up, we'll call on Chief Mukau for a donation to the fire department.
Good morning, Chief. Mayor, members of the council, hi, we'll make this quick. Working with Great Plains Natural Gas Company here in town, we learned that MDU or Montana Dakota Utilities Foundation had a grant program that would help us replace our air monitoring equipment that was needed. And so, yeah, so we submitted for that, and we were the recipient of a three thousand dollar donation from MDU, MDU Foundation. And just looking for your approval of the, to accept the three thousand dollar donation, then also for the budget adjustment of our equipment capital fund to account for that money. And then, we will go and purchase a couple new air monitors for hazardous materials calls. So, they detect the, the natural gas that we respond to if it, if it leaks from the, from the lines that they, that they have, the Great Plains Natural Gas. But also, we use it for carbon monoxide calls. It gives us a level of oxygen in the air, so if somebody has strange symptoms and whatnot, it's, it's a multi-use tool that, that we have.
Thanks, Chief.
I make the motion to accept.
Thank you.
I'll second that, I got a comment.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Anthony.
I, I agree, and I just want to say that Green Plains would add the other thousand dollars to that request if that's acceptable to Mr. Fish to amend his.
Done.
And, and I'll abstain from the vote.
Thank you. So, well, the motion is to bring this to the council with an amendment to add Green Plains as a matching funds to this and to bring that to the council on Monday night on the consent agenda, I believe, is appropriate. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Any abstentions?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. We'll bring it to the council. Thanks, Chief.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Green Plains.
You, you've got to do enough for us.
All right. Last item on the agenda this morning is the City Council Retreat Follow-Up. We'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, your honor, council members. I need to talk to the person who creates the agenda about going after the fire chief and a positive item like that. So, we'll have to get on that. But in all honesty, Chief Mukau does a great job and is a great leader for our community, and appreciate his work and, and all of that. Real quickly, because I'm talking about him, I'm just going to mention the fire department has a pancake breakfast on Sunday, which goes directly to support some of the equipment they're looking at purchasing. So, tell me the times, Ryan.
Seven thirty to one.
Seven thirty to one, Sunday at the fire station. If you're looking for something to do or a good breakfast, I know they'll be happy to, to hook you up. So, that was my quick plug on that. As you all know, on April thirteenth, the City Council and the department heads from the city held a retreat out at the Bigwood. We went from about eight AM to two thirty PM. We had a really fruitful day with a lot of good discussion. That session was open to the public, and unfortunately, we didn't have anybody from the public join us. It was a marathon. We were missing our friends from Ward Three. So, you know, this may be a, a new information for them as we talk through this. But we had a lot of good discussion that day, and there was a couple of items that required some follow-up, not only for the sake of action, public awareness and transparency as well. With nobody attending that session, we thought it would be prudent to recap these things for the public. Again, I did at the council meeting last week, but again, talk about some items today and have further discussion should the council decide they want to take action on this item. So, your honor, I'm just going to go through one at a time, and if there's discussion on each, I think that'd be appropriate, and if the public wants to speak, you know, that's up to you if you want to let that happen. But in, in my mind, going one at a time here in this memo would be most productive. So, I'll just jump right in to the first one.
Please do.
So, we talked a little bit about the open forum. This has been a conversation that's happened several times over the years, and we've had multiple iterations of what an open forum looks like. And at the first town hall meeting, there was conversation around this item. So, it was followed up with at the retreat on April thirteenth. And it was pretty clear that the consensus of the council during that meeting was that they want... they want to make the open forum more publicly accessible and more user-friendly for the public. And what that conversation centered around was putting the open forum, removing it from prior to the meeting and the need for people to sign up the day of the meeting or prior to the meeting, but putting it actually on the agenda as part of the city council meeting. The city used to do it that way. Again, we've had multiple iterations of that, but this council expressed the desire to have a standing place on the agenda every meeting for the public to come up to the podium, address you as the elected officials, and discuss a topic that's not on the agenda for that evening. So the, the conversation did contemplate the fact that we probably need to keep some of the parameters in place. You know, we're not going to be looking for people to stand up here and make political endorsements or personal attacks on, you know, individual members of staff or things like that. Things need to be relevant to the city and appropriate, and speakers would be limited to three minutes. And again, keeping things respectful and, and not argumentative or disparaging or harassing or anything like that, but opening up the opportunity for the public to address their elected officials. So I'll stop there. If the council wants to change the ruling of the open forum, they can do so by resolution at the council meeting.
So we could, I think there was consensus at that meeting, we've discussed it, we could, we could make a motion to direct city staff, city attorney to change the city ordinance code, whatever the language is necessary to bring it back to, to fit the parameters that Andrew described, to make it more open, to make it part of the regular agenda. Someone like to make that motion to bring that to the council on Monday night?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Anthony, thanks. Scott? Comments, questions? Scott?
When it comes time to draft that policy or draft that change, there's some edits to our open forum policy that I'd like to recommend. And I'll just read a couple of them, but then there'll be some process to this, I'm sure. So I don't know that we need to go point by point and all of that. But generally, I think it's still important for whoever might be coming to speak, that they sign in so that we get an accurate record of who they are and, and that the places, other places that I've been, many other counties in particular, when I've had to go and do my work, I find that there are those similar requirements where you got to sign in. It's not just you walk up and say who you are, but there's actually a record of who's attending and signing in to speak at the meeting. The policy that we currently have specifically says that it's, you know, regarding a business item that's not on the agenda, I think people ought to be able to speak on something whether it's on the agenda or not, so there's just a kind of a detail there.
To that point, Councilman Kwame, the, the thought is that they should be recognized by the mayor during that actual item on the agenda to keep the conversation appropriate, not, you know, the council takes action at the front of the meeting and during open forum, they're going to take it in a whole nother direction at the end kind of thing. So they get recognized during the actual item on the agenda. That's the purpose of that.
Okay. Another thing that perhaps isn't clear in that first line of policy is that it's for a regular council meeting, but would this also apply for committee of the whole meetings such as this? Is the open forum, we never really discussed that question, so I'm laying the question out there that we're going to need to think about. Do we want that to be a part of the open forum as well as our regular council meetings or not? Because it actually spells out the time, you know, 5:20 to 5:30 is what it's been, but if we're going to spell out the time, then obviously the times for our council meetings and our committee meetings are different. Couple other minor things, as far as the time, three minutes is a typical recommendation. I think the mayor ought to be allowed to extend time if it's, more time is needed and everybody seems okay with that, but it wouldn't be required. And then the last item on here is that regarding the use of the city technology and the way that a presentation might be made, someone may come with a map or a document or a, something that they'd like everybody to see, and it's not often possible for them to be prepared to hand out to everybody in the room. And having it up on the screen, it would be a typical situation that people would expect now. Currently, the policy reads that using city technology is not allowed. I think that, that ought to be a method made that that can be done. You know, something as simple as using an, you know, one of these projector deals, you can get them anywhere from $200 to $2,000. It's not that they're a difficult thing to do, but it would allow people to be able to bring something. And again, I've seen this type of technology available in many other meeting rooms and it would be good to include that here. The information I would include with that though is that if you're someone coming and wanting to use that, that it would be allowed if you arranged it ahead of time. Anything that you could bring and put on a document camera would be simple, but if you were going to do something that needed anything more than that, the city staff would need at least 24 to 48 hours to review it. We don't want to have to have something come into our technology that could cause us trouble. And so that kind of request wouldn't be denied, you know, on the spot, but if it was properly...
Your Honor, can we address these, like, in the policy, just for interest of time? You know, if they're going to draft the document?
Yep, and that's the last line I was going to make. And so with those comments, then I'd be happy to, you know, provide this to the staff and then see if there's any, anything else anybody just wanted to recommend.
Yeah, thanks, Guy. And as you mentioned, there will be a process to go through. These are all good suggestions that have considerations. Yeah, Jim?
I, I have a comment. I think, I think the open forum should be only at the council meeting. Committee of the whole is, we try it to an hour, and because we have everybody that needs to get back to work or go to work. So I, I think it should only be at the council meeting where we have time to do something like that. Personal opinion.
Yeah, and, and yeah, thank you, Jim. And we, like we've mentioned, we'll, this will be something that'll need to be changed in our code if we change the agenda so that we're timed for...
It's just a resolution, Your Honor, but we'll bring, if you have thoughts on that, send them to Lynn. We'll create a policy and then we'll bring it back for presentation. You can make whatever change is necessary at that time.
So this morning, we have a motion to direct, to, to bring to the council to direct staff to make, to begin to make those changes that will include discussion from us and from the public. So all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Yep, thank you. Moving on, Your Honor, just real quickly, minutes, we talked about minutes. Staff had been getting more detailed with preparing minutes because we had a lot of changes to the minutes as we were presenting them. And the discussion came up from the council at the retreat that they want shorter minutes that summarize the discussion and actions of the council and get away from the transcribing or the transcription of what people are saying. So just as an FYI, if the minutes look like they're more brief, that's why. The council didn't want long minutes with transcriptions and 11 pages and, you know, those are obviously time-consuming and, and more detailed than necessary as to capture what actually happened and who voted on what and how they voted and some of those things required under law. So if there's no further action on that unless there's questions or discussion. Moving on?
Moving on.
All right, thank you, Your Honor, members. Adding agenda items, we talked about the importance for items to not be added to the agenda at the last second unless it's something that is, time is of the essence and we just learned about it. You know, if Senator Asmussen calls me on Friday after the packet went out on Thursday and said, here's an opportunity, but the deadline is Tuesday of next week, you know, there might be an exception that needs to be made to act on something like that where time is of the essence or we don't have that awareness. But otherwise, we want to be very deliberate about giving the public and the council the opportunity to see exactly what the council's going to be discussing, what the actions are going to be of the council and have all of that information in the council and the public's hands. Our goal is Thursday at 2 o'clock prior to the meetings. We're required to have that out by Friday, so we, we always meet the deadlines related to getting that information out there. City administrator under our code sets the agenda. Again, I'm not going to put myself after the fire chief any longer, but that is, you know, something, if you have an item that you want on the agenda, I'm certainly happy to accommodate that and work with you on that, so let me know. But keep in mind, our deadline is, is on Thursdays and a lot of items will come to the committee of the whole prior, so don't have anything that we have to do for action per se, but one other thing, there's a lot of times where staff will have a document they add to your desk the night of the council meeting. We talked about the fact that if that's the case, that item will be moved to the following meeting for action because we want, again, the public to have the opportunity to see what's in front of the council, see what's in front of them, and allow them the opportunity to weigh in or participate. So obviously, the, the theme of my conversation here today is transparency and public participation, making the process more user-friendly, not only for council members so they're not surprised, but staff and the public as well.
Just one thing to add, our, our, our charter does specify that once the agenda is set, any items that are added are done so by unanimous consent of the council. So if Senator Asmussen sends you something on Friday and the council, you bring it to the council, the council, you know, if it's unanimous, we're going to take that item up, then, then we take it up. And if it's, if it's not, then we don't. So, I mean, it's pretty clear in there.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning that, Your Honor.
My, my only comment on that would be maybe we have to look at just the means of how we follow up on old business. If, if there's something, you know, from old, old business, and maybe there's something we have to think about.
Because I think that old business is a general, my thought, yeah, but I think it's worthy of a discussion because old business is a general agenda item, but specific business items need to be approved by the entire council or taken from the city administrator so they're put on the agenda. But we can have that discussion, but it's pretty clear, I think, then we'll get the city attorney's interpretation, but needs to be unanimous from the council to take up items that aren't on the agenda presented to the public. So, all right, moving on.
Moving on, thank you, Your Honor, members. Town hall meetings, again, my, it should be clear from what I'm saying that the goal is not to take away opportunities, but to provide opportunities, and I think everything we're talking about does that. When we talk about town hall meetings, we are talking about how we can make sure those are productive for the citizens and for the council and be most effective. And the conversation at the retreat centered around how we can have these become official events of the city and be meetings that the entire council can participate in. There were ideas tossed around of having quarterly town hall meetings where Ward One hosts the first one, Ward Two hosts second, and so on. There were talks about having the whole council participate but less frequently. You know, the, the reality is this, if every one of you decided to have town hall meetings, and I, I'm a big proponent of town hall meetings and I think they're great and any opportunity for the public to speak is a good one, but if every one of you, nine, had town hall meetings and asked the city to put staff and resources behind it, that's 108 meetings, assuming you have it monthly. That's not practical. And, you know, if we really want the citizens' voices to be heard and brought to the council, I think it's worthwhile to have all the council members or a majority of the council members hear that information firsthand so they can take direct action on that. I think the first town hall, we saw how they can be successful. We took items from that, we were able to implement right away. We're talking about some of those items here this morning, and I think done the right way, and again, this is a discussion the council had, I'm just the messenger here today, but done the right way, I think these can be a really good thing for the community. I have concerns, and I know others do as well, with the way it's done right now. Just last week, there was a meeting held, there was a lot of misinformation, there was a statement made that the Aquatic Center is going to take 26 years to pay off, it's going to take nine. There was a member of the public that stood up here and was fielding questions on behalf of the city, misinformation, gave the wrong information, really bad optics, right? So it's not about trying to limit speech, it's not about trying to limit opportunities, it's about trying to do it appropriately and effectively and make sure it works for everybody. So the conversation that the council had was if these aren't going to be city events, they still encourage the events from happening, but not to have them at city hall, as that gives the optics that they're official events of the city and that the city should be involved and have the resources behind that. So the council had directed staff to not spend city resources on these events unless they look a little bit differently and they can work better for everybody. So I'll stop there and see what discussion there is or if there's any questions.
Thanks, Andrew. Tom?
Yeah, and I'll just mention that I, you know, I really pushed on that point that I don't feel like this is an appropriate venue for anyone to have, you know, an individual, you know, town hall meeting in that way that's not, you know, supported by the rest of the council, you know, with staff involvement, you know, and I'm not trying to limit anybody's speech. There are numerous venues all throughout the city where any individual can bring together any group that they choose, and I think that's great and, and, and should happen, and people should have their voices expressed. But, I mean, the fact is that when it happens here, it can look like an official city function with the, the support of the city, and I just don't feel that that's appropriate when it's not a full council meeting to discuss and take action.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, Al?
I think I'm the one in question here. Yep, just to put some background on all this for everyone, and I'm going to say it to everyone. This was a campaign issue last fall. As I walked the board in Ward Three, people wanted a voice, they, they felt like they weren't being heard. And I said, you know, there's other things that maybe can be done. I'd like to see a town hall meeting, that sort of thing. When this all became possible, I believe it was probably about a month before, we'd have to look at that, Andrew, but I'm sure it's on your schedule and it's on Lynn's, there was a meeting with a third ward resident who wanted me with him. And we met with Andrew, city attorney, Lynn, and I think Bill was there too, I can't remember Bill. As we were in that, after that meeting, I said, you know, I'd like to do, fulfill this campaign promise. I want to find out where, what, what I need to do if I have to take out a permit or if I have to have certain location or certain things that I needed to proceed with this. And at that time, I guess I was really taken back at the support that I got from Andrew and Rolf, and also Lynn, and, and I can't, there again, I can't remember if Bill was there or not, but I can savor those three. Now, with that being said, it was offered to me at that time to have it here. So we did that. I was very shocked, I was very happy. So I thank you for that. After the first meeting, I talked to Andrew, and we had visited afterwards, and I said, so how do you think it went? He goes, well, I thought it went well. And I said the same thing, I said, I thought it went really well. You know, I said it was even fun, and I think you might even said that too. I can't remember.
I agree with you on that.
But, but you said it went well.
It went well.
It went well. And then when it came time to set the next one, I did get it, I brought in the flyer and it was not on the city hall Facebook, it was on the calendar, but there was a lot of people who called me and called others and, you know, that first, that first meeting was, I think, be like 70-some people. And we were down a little bit, but we had a quarter of new members that came, new, new residents that came, some that had just moved here from the cities, the metro area, which was great, but they wanted to be part of a voice. So that was very interesting to see. So out of the ones that did come at the second meeting, there was 75% basically that were here at the first one and a quarter of the people that were here for the first time. And some of the people who were here that weren't here would have been here if they would have known a little bit more about it, as far as advertising it. But, and I'm, and I'm fine with not having staff if, you know, because we talked about that too, Andrew. I said, you know, it's very nice that you guys were here, but I said, it's totally up to you. Every council member is invited, you know, it's welcome to all, you can all say something, but it's not my job to say anything. This is for the residents of Fergus Falls. This is for the people. This I look at as, and as you offered this venue, this is the people's place too. You know, they should be welcomed in, they should feel comfortable. And, you know, the last meeting, basically Scott Kwame and Laura Jobe were here, along with myself, and that's fine. If all of you had have been here, that's fine. If any staff is here, that's fine. If none is here, that's fine. You know, as far as opening and closing the venue, I know that Councilman Kwame closed the door, he locked it. And I could sure do that too. So, you know, I don't think that, and I could open it too if you, if you would let me. But otherwise, I think the real issue here is what's, what's coming up with the people now that I've heard is that they feel like they're going to be, be stifled. It's not me you're hurting, it's going to be the people and the citizens of Fergus Falls, because that's what they want. And they came from all over the city to be here. So that's where, where I'm at with that. As far as how things went this last time, Andrew, I was never told that this wasn't going to happen anymore personally by any of the city staff. I found out about it and I didn't even read it, the newspaper article last Saturday. Nobody called me, nobody said anything to me from the staff, which I think is kind of, for me, it's kind of hurtful, just due to the fact that, you know, this is a campaign promise, this is what the people want, and now it's not going to happen here anymore, which I, you know, if that doesn't, I can't say anything about that. I, it's, you know, that, it's me trying to bring something to the city, to the, to to the to the staff, to the mayor, and if I can't do that, then we'll have to use a different venue. But it, I think it, the people have something to say about that too. But I appreciate your help. When we first did this, I was very surprised that, you know, Rolf was very much on board, and as you were too, to have it here.
Thanks, Al.
Your honor.
So I just want to make a couple comments. First of all, make, just to make sure staff, it wasn't, you know, staff is just delivering the message of the of the discussion that was held at the council retreat. And I think the council retreat, there was some differences of opinion on 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 whether or not this is the right venue or not, of who should be, who allowed to participate and such. But it's very clear from the from the council that was there that they did not feel that this was the proper venue for 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 that type of event. Again, there was differences of opinion there, but for the sake of time, I think this does need to be discussed. But I think we should set a policy of, oh, please.
I I just have to say something.
Yeah.
I still support this, I I definitely encourage this, I still do. But to the mayor's point, the council discussion has led us in a different way, doesn't mean I necessarily agree with it. I said at the first meeting, sitting in that chair, this is the people's house, I still feel that way.
And I did as well at the council retreat just for, because that was a public meeting, and there was other council members who didn't necessarily agree with me, and 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 I want the whole council to discuss this. Councilmember Hicks was very adamant at that public meeting that he didn't feel like this was this, uh, a particular place. Councilmember Hicks and I have had town hall meetings when we both were city council members, we had them in Otter Tail Power, we had them at the Historical Society. So I think it's a fruitful, and I think it's a legitimate discussion, I think we should have it Monday night when all of the council is here. But the recommendation was clear from the council retreat of the six council members that were there. It was unanimous that we decided that in the future, the town hall meetings, we all support them. It just wasn't here with the optics of it being a of a city, a city event. That that was the discussion of of the council. So.
Can I finish my thought, your honor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, you're up to go.
It's okay.
Apologize, Andrew, go ahead.
It's a loaded conversation, of course, and and, you know, it's a passionate conversation. I, the intent, and I can assure you of this, Councilmember Creymeyer, of the council at that discussion at the retreat was not to stifle opportunities. I can assure you of that. It may look that way, people can misconstrue it that way, they can do whatever they need to do. That is not the intent of the discussion, it was how can we do a better job of making sure this works for the people and for the city? And I think the other night was a prime example because we had so much, and this isn't directed at you in any way. We had, there was so much misinformation and disinformation or fake news floating around the room that we probably caused more damage to the public and the city as an organization, to the people that weren't here that now believe that as fact. And that's not a good place to be. We have to find a way that we can do it so we're sharing good information, we're hearing the voices of the people. I hear chuckles behind me, I know they probably want to speak. I certainly value everything they and everybody else in the community has to say, but there were comments made the other night that anybody who's not in the room doesn't care about the future direction of the city. That's not true, and we all know that. There's so many passionate people in this town, and we have to find a venue so everybody's voices are heard, so good information's being shared. So Bill Sanmar, who's probably the best finance director in the state of Minnesota, can answer questions about the city's budget. Brian Yvar, who's a wonderful city engineer, can talk about what the city's plans and projections are on projects. Not residents guessing, second guessing, throwing out misinformation and leading us down rat holes. So that's, that's the concern. I fully support the opportunity for the public to be heard, and in every opport, I've said that for the seven years I've been here. So this isn't my issue necessarily, I'm the messenger, but there's ways we can improve it, and I want to work with you, Councilmember Creymeyer, and the whole council to figure out ways in which we can improve that, and staff would be a part of it. I I can speak on behalf of staff today that they'll be happy to be a part of something that will be good information sharing between the citizens of Fergus Falls and the entire city council.
Thank you, and and I'm just going to say, for the interest, in the interest of time, we're going to, I'll let people make some last comments. We're going to wrap this conversation up and continue it on Monday night because it is a good conversation, like, Andrew. I can sincerely say, no one's trying to to limit the people's opportunity to speak, we just want, I personally wanted to make sure that it's done in a way that is beneficial to the entire community. So I I truly appreciate the fact of you hosting town hall meetings, I've always supported town hall meetings, I always will support town hall meetings, I think it's incredibly important. But we have to do so in a way that is productive and that that the the entire council can support. So, anyway, last comments before we have a motion, well, we don't even have a motion, need a motion, we're going to continue this conversation on Monday night. Tom, and then Alf, you had something to say.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, it was unfortunate that Councilmember Creymeyer did not attend the meeting where we had such a good discussion, and I feel like the 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 point is is trying to be made that we're somehow trying to stifle free speech and and taking this opportunity away from residents, that's not at all what's happening, I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear on that. First of all, this venue isn't big enough for that many people. There's rooms at the library, there's rooms at the Otter Tail Power Community Center, and I'm sure there's other venues that I haven't even thought of where, like I said, any citizen, any council member can gather any group of people together that they want to. What the council, my impression of our discussion at that meeting was that that we want to make sure that that council members, you know, are here, and we want to make sure that, or not, you know, necessarily here, but wherever it happens to be, and and that staff has an opportunity to respond to those claims that are made, because as Andrew said, I mean, when people come up here and just spout misinformation and nonsense, it makes the whole city look bad. And I'm not okay with that, not with the, and the people that I represent aren't either.
Thank you, Tom. Al and then Scott, and then we're going to move on to.
I'll make it, I'll make it quick.
Please, go ahead, Al.
Just to, just so everyone knows here, my plan was to be at that meeting on Thursday. As you know, Tom, since you're into the trades now, I've waited twelve weeks to get a roof on a building, and that night I found out that the crew was coming. So I reached out to Councilmember Hicks and to Councilmember Jobe to inform Lynn because it was after the five o'clock when I had got this notification, so that's why I wasn't there. So, just wanted to clarify that because that's something that I was very important to me that I had to get done. As far as, you know, the people with, I just think they need a a chance to speak and a chance to, and you're going to get right and wrong information. But when you have two different sides like that, I think what we have to realize too is that starts the discussion, and that brings people in the middle. It it it's not about saying something that's completely wrong or something that's completely right. You know, what it does, it opens up the, it opens up the conversation, and that's all I want. You know, I, if something's going down a wrong road, I'm going to step up and say something. I'm going to say, hey, you know what, we can't talk about that, or we shouldn't be talking about that. But, you know, people have a right to say certain things at that meeting, and that's their free speech. I just don't want to, you know, stifle the public, so thank you.
I think we, I think we could all agree on that, no, no one wants to stifle the public. So, we'll have, continue this discussion on on Monday night, and if the public is, oh, yes, Scott, one last comment.
One last comment, I think that there's been an opinion or a, an idea sort of kept alive that somehow these open forums are taking the place that of a situation that didn't exist, that somehow these questions that people might want to raise, there's been no way to do it before, when in fact, we've had an open forum policy forever. And there was no question raised at either of the last two forums that couldn't have been raised at this meeting or any other meeting. So it hasn't been that there hasn't been a way for people to get their questions presented or asked. It may be more convenient or in some ways, you know, a different feel to it when it's presented as these these two meetings were done. But the fact is, there has been that opportunity for people all along. It's not that it, anyone's been shut out or that any opinion or opportunity has been completely blocked. You know, it's been there all along, and I think with the improvements that we're now discussing for our open forum policy, it'll, it'll get better. I think it'll, I think that'll really make a difference to address these questions.
Thanks, Scott. Anything else, Andrew, before we move on on that one?
No, other than I look forward to working with all of you to figure out what that looks like to provide more opportunities for the public, I I think that's a good thing.
Thanks, Andrew.
Moving on, thank you, your honor, members. Code of Conduct, this is kind of, as I mentioned at the retreat, as colleagues, we often communicate with other cities, and the city of Detroit Lakes had asked a question of several of us, related ironically to open forum in the beginning of April, they had a a public meeting go south on them where somebody was criticizing a single member of staff, and it got very out of hand, I guess, and they didn't have the mechanism to handle that. So it led to a bigger discussion amongst my colleagues and city administrators and managers in these neighboring communities. And randomly, one day, the city administrator of Alexandria sent me and others an email saying, if any of you ever have any trouble with, you know, the cohesiveness of your council or conduct of council, we adopted a good code of conduct a few years ago, and just wanted to share that as an as an FYI. Ironically, we were talking internally at the exact same time about what a code of conduct may look like. We had a lot of questions about our ethics ordinance that's on the books now. And so we were able to take Alexandria's code of conduct, and so if you review that, it's going to be very similar, but we made it so it works for Fergus Falls, citing the correct charter stat, or charter sections, the correct sections of code more accurately reflects our process. And then we presented that at the retreat for the council to consider, think about, talk about if they wanted to adopt something like that. Alexandria has had to use it, I guess, one time, and I said it's been a good tool to help council members hold one another accountable and and work with shared values as to how conduct should be on the council. So, I don't have a lot to add today other than that's been distributed to all of you. It's in the public packet that went out last week pertaining to this meeting. What my intention is, is to hold a work session on May tenth to discuss that in more detail. So please review that in the meantime, send any comments or suggestions, you may have to Lynn, and she can compile that, and we'll get that ready for conversation on May tenth. If the council wishes to adopt this, we can certainly do that by resolution on May fifteenth following that work session. So it's not urgent or imminent, but and certainly it's up to the council how they want to proceed, but it's a tool that's worked in other communities, and I would just put that on the table as an option for this council to consider and discuss, so I don't need to go any further on that.
Yeah, thanks, just one comment, because I did receive a call yesterday from the public. That individual also talked to Lynn, and I just assured that individual that they, this, you know, you mentioned the May tenth work session, there will be opportunities for the public to comment on on this, so we can have that conversation as that process moves along. Yes.
Just a quick, quickly, I mean, yeah, not to, just for the sake of time. Just very quickly, yeah, I knew that that came from Alexandria. It's, it's very detailed, and there's some points in there that would really need to be discussed, I think, and I don't know if the council and the Charter Commission should, you know, the Charter Commission, I believe, has, you know, done the code of conduct in the past, and I think that we, they need to be involved with this, maybe a work session with them to go through this line by line, because I I I think we need to to refine that a little bit and to really look at that, because some of that is is, as I read through it, I I didn't see the point of it, but anyway, that was.
Your honor, Councilmember Creymeyer, to pick on you a little bit.
Yep.
We talked about that at the retreat.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Council, Councilmember Jobe brought that up, and and what we talked about at the retreat was to invite the Charter Commission members to that work session. So.
Thank you.
We are two steps ahead of you.
I just didn't see it in any minutes.
So anyway, no, we'll get that, I appreciate that.
All right, so there, yeah, just to read it, there will be opportunities for amending that, discussing it, public input, et cetera, so that process is ongoing.
All right, your honor, thank you. Last one, mediation, this is, again, messenger, don't shoot the messenger, this is an uncomfortable conversation, obviously, for me, but for the council as well. The council discussed at the retreat some of the issues and tension that has been part of our meetings for the first few months of the year here, and you know, specifically how our two members from Ward Three probably don't see, I I think I went as far as to use the word dysfunctional relationship, and that's my word, so forgive me for that if that's inappropriate, but what the council expressed, and and I think Councilmember Hicks was was the one who came up with the idea, quite honestly, was that it's probably worth an a chance or a an attempt at mediation between the two of you to get the relationship on track for the greater good of the the community, the city council and the city as a whole. Certainly, those things are are completely up to the the members, but I think the goal or the desire of the council at the retreat was that we had offered the opportunity and asked for both of you to participate in that. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Hartwell, he was on task with talking or looking for what that may sound like and and seeking out a mediator, and and I know that the League of Minnesota Cities offers this service free to cities because this is not something that's unique to Fergus Falls, there's tensions all over the place, and I'm going to turn it over to Mike and see if he has anything to add, and and after that, my portion, I think, is complete.
Thank you, Andrew.
For the conversation this morning, obviously, these are some challenging conversations with a lot of implication, and I appreciate the the good discussion.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks for leading that retreat too, I think it was fruitful, a lot of good things are going to come out of it. Mike?
Good morning. I'll be thirty seconds here. One of the action items that came out was for me to look for a capable mediator to help resolve conflict within this governing body. I have found an individual that has impeccable qualifications and credentials, her name is Amy Glay. She works for the League of Minnesota Cities. I've also provided each council member with her bio that is very accomplished. She's done everything from practicing law to developing mediation curriculum for the Hamlin Mitchell Law School, so she is very, very good at doing this. When I talked to her on the phone, she said, we are not unique, this is something that she does every day, and she said she'd be more willing to, more than willing to help us. And what she said to me, which was really interesting, is that we all need a coach from time to time. So her approach is very effective, it's at coaching, bringing people together for getting on the right foot together. So, I was impressed, and so I would turn it over to the council to decide if that is something that you wish for me to further engage. But again, there has to be willing participation, otherwise, it's it's pointless.
Al?
Mike, I've lived with a doctor of psychology most of my life. And so I know what you're talking about. What I want to go back to is listening, but what's more important is understanding. This is not between me and Brent Thompson. As Andrew says, don't shoot the messenger. I brought something to City Hall on behalf of a third ward resident. That was the issue there. The other issue was, in Ward Two, a resident brought something against Brent Thompson. I have brought nothing to him. So I don't understand why we're coming up with an issue here with me, and I'm not, I'm the messenger for the one person, the other person did it alone.
You know, I think, Councilmember, the offering this would give you a chance to explain that to somebody that's outside of this arena. I'm not privy or knowledgeable to even the conflict at hand, but certainly she would be a person that would be able to listen to both of you and certainly maybe provide a path forward.
Yeah, I just am trying to explain what this is about. So I just want to make it crystal clear, once again, I brought this up at a council meeting, that it was between two residents in this city. I brought up nothing, and then it got turned towards me.
So so this, just, let me just say, because I was at the retreat, and again, I think to echo what Mike's saying is, I think that this would provide an opportunity, no one's pointing anything towards anybody. There's a, there seems to be a a a conflict, the council as an entire body, not individuals, but as a body, which that's where the power of the council lies, wants to see the most effective functioning relationship amongst the council as a whole. And they they suggested, Councilmember Hicks is the one, I think, that suggested, so I don't want to speak for him because he's not here. So this is the suggestion that came out of that retreat, and as Mike said, it needs two willing participants to go for it. So that that's the recommendation, I don't think we need to talk a whole lot more about it. We 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 need willing participants in order for that to happen, and that's what the council as a whole asks for. So it's not directed negatively towards anybody, but it is something that the council as a whole came up with as a solution so that we can be the most functioning body possible for the people of Fergus Falls.
And and I agree with you, I, you know, it's about the people, and that's what I did for the one third ward council member to bring it forward. Thank you.
So that's the, that's the recommendation of the of the council would be to 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 move forward. And yes, we are at, we're at the time that we're going to adjourn here quickly, but please, please make some comments.
I'll keep it quick, you know, and I mean, of course, that retreat would have been the perfect opportunity to start this conversation, you know, but that didn't happen unfortunately. And I personally feel it's necessary, and I would just strongly encourage both council members to participate because something needs to be done.
Thank you, Tom. Scott?
This would be a question for Mike, as I understand it, as our, as we are members of the League of Minnesota Cities, this is essentially a benefit that we can draw on, and it would come at no cost to the city.
No cost.
Thank you.
So hopefully, we can allow the council members to talk to staff, and then at the Monday night's council meeting, we could direct staff to engage in this process if there are two willing council members, I guess, at the direction of 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 the council. So that's what we're leaving for this morning. Andrew, thank you for your recap of the retreat. Anything else to come before the council this morning? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.